The. The contract negotiations that happened between the RCMP and the federal government and then the downloading of the back pay and then expectations for pay going forward. There is an absolute understanding to bring the RCMP salary to the other police services, which was fine, but the fact that it took as many years as it did to renegotiate that contract, leaving municipalities, paying the back pay where the city with Asman could see upwards of a million dollars. Many other municipalities are facing the same thing. Cities like Red Deer and Grand Prairie will be facing significant costs that go along with it. So we have been advocating along with the province to have the federal government cover that back pay. So hopefully we'll have an answer for that coming up soon. And as we were getting into election season, most of the other meetings have either been put off until after the election or just haven't been happening. So I think that's all I have to report on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. So we had our community engagement committee meeting last week. And sadly, we decided to put off winter warm up just with all the new COVID restrictions and COVID numbers. It's just, it's really hard to try and figure out what November is going to look like. So unfortunately, we had to cancel it. We are hoping to do a spring event instead, and so come springtime, we'll try to make a bigger and better event. But we're still looking at doing light up with Taskwin. That way we can still have a little bit of something to cheer us up during Christmas. In addition to that, we finally had a library board meeting after the past few months of not having one. Nothing really need to report with the library board right now, just kind of a lot of catch up stuff and maintenance. And I also had the opportunity to go to the production of New Blood over at the Man Like Theater, and it was absolutely incredible. And if anybody ever gets the opportunity to go, I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Well, this is not a committee. I attended the local parade of programs at the Civic Center Drill Hall, and suffice to say, it was a really poor turnout. I don't know if it was simply a lack of interest, reluctance on the part of communities to come out, but I in talking to a number of clubs and organizations, they were really hurting in terms of getting registrations into programs. And so I was asked on a number of occasions by different groups, if there's something the city could do in the future to help promote some of these community events. As Councilor Blatts, I attended New Blood production at Namex Theater, as did Joe. A pretty powerful presentation for sure. So anybody who gets the opportunity really should should see it. I was invited to and participated in with Taskman Arts and Crafts General Meeting. They had some questions of me relating to their operation over and the next few months as we navigate the waters of the provincial announcements. And so they're worried about whether they will be able to operate this year at all and whether expectations on rent and all that kind of thing would still be in place. And I simply informed them that it was too early to tell at this point in time more information as we wrestle with the whole the whole concept itself. So that's all I have to report. So thank you. Item number three, I'd invite Inspector Durant and and guests to the table to make their presentation, their quarterly report. It's okay. We've got all day here.
No, you don't. Yeah. Very busy afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and give you our Q two report. To my right is the new staff sergeant in charge of operations at our detachment, Angela Fieldcrest, who arrived just three weeks ago to our to the community. She comes to us from Red Deer. Angela and I worked together in Fort McMurray for several years prior to she comes with a large amount of experience in operations in large municipal police forces, as well as worked in several smaller communities as well. So we welcome Angela. It's gonna be nice to have her here fill that chair along with a couple other, one more senior NCO to come, and then our entire senior management team will be together. And Angela's coming in to have a have a seat on how we go about doing portal reports. I'm sure she will be giving the odd report from time to time. So welcome. I'll just jump right into it. First slide, please. Just a quick update on HR. This is now the new format based on the new 10 positions that we've received. The 10 are highlighted in red with the new positions. You'll see that four are in the city side and the light blue at the bottom of one is in green and general duty. One in general investigation section, two constables to the crew team, one to community policing and with the influx of the number of members to the detachment and adding significant members to the Plankos side, it has increased the NCO position that was a sergeant into a staff sergeant position. This is through through growth. We were also able to retain the sergeant position as well. The sergeant position, instead of it being an operation support NCO or in charge of playing close, the staff sergeant position will then be in charge of all of GIS crew and the other support units. The sergeant position, which was normally in charge of those units, is being retained as an operation support NCO. We will call it an operation support NCO. It'll be the number two to Angela. However, that position is going to be more of an administrative NCO and will take care of things like our annual performance plan. Our ULQA process is reviewing of file, our HR, all of our training. These are significant pieces that either Angela or our other sergeant position had to share. Now we'll be able to put that into one position to maintain all of that. What that gives us is a senior staff sergeant to look after all of the serious investigations, the crime reduction team, everything else, and then Angela unfettered to look after operations. So that is the new structure based on the 10 new positions. Of those 10 positions, want to move to the next slide, please? Of those two positions, seven of the 10 positions have been filled and or named. All of the municipal positions have been filled, the new ones. Now, with the caveat on top of that, we also lost a few people who have been in the detachment for quite some time, which created vacancies on the city side. So we have four big actual vacancies in this on the municipal side of this particular timeframe. The general, the staff sergeant position is pending a promotional action that went out by bulletin to fill laterally, in other words, looking for a staff sergeant to come in. That was unsuccessful. So now we're going by way of promotion. I suspect this is going to take anywhere from three to four months to complete. That being said, our sergeant Dean Bruno, who I think you guys may have met a couple of weeks ago, is actually filling in in the staff sergeant role. So he's just moved over and he's now taken over the general investigation crew team, that sort of stuff. And now, for lack of a better term, his position remains blocked until such time as that action takes place. Of the four other positions between now and middle of October, they will all be filled. There've been named positions coming in of those two. Four positions to our experienced officers coming in from on a lateral experienced officer program, two of them coming from Lake Shore Police Services and up by Slave Lake. And they are currently in a training process right now over taking a little bit of training in in Regina, and they will be landing October 12th. So instead of getting two new members cadets from the farm, we're actually getting two experienced members coming in. It was supposed to be four, but two fell by with a wayside in the selection process and in the hiring over to the RCMP side. So instead of getting four experienced officers, we're only getting two. I also have a GIS constable that'll be filled in September 28th, which will be tomorrow. And that creates a vacancy. That's an internal and it creates a vacancy on our general duty side. However, that position's also been named and we'll have another piece of person coming to fill that position in middle of October. Based on the increase in establishment, we also had a new ME support staff position that was named this year. It has been filled internally. What ended up happening was we had a support staff member that went away on extended mat leave and then ended up terminating to be a mom for a little while. We actually hired her back as an intern to fill in for other lady that was away on that leave. And with that, we've been able to absorb her back into the detachment and fill that ME position. So it is filled. Last but certainly not least is the criminal analyst position, which still remains a bit of a struggle with K Division. It's in the staffing action process. I've had several phone calls and meetings with the intelligence officer in K Division and his number two initially was held up with the new manager that was supposed to be hired in DCAST. That's now been facilitated. I was away last week and followed up with another phone call this morning. So I'm still waiting to determine they're trying to review exactly what level of analyst we want, and they're going to give us. So I'm in negotiations with them to determine there's three different levels of analyst. I've asked for the middle one, and they are now coming back to me to say, well, which level of analyst want? But originally, when this whole process started way back when, I already told them what level. So we're just a little bit of a lack of breakdown of communication between myself and the DCAST intelligence officer who not sure he wasn't in place when this whole process started. So continue to work on that piece and get that moving forward. Next slide. Okay, general overview on statistics, persons crimes are up 35%. Property crime down seven, other criminal code down seven, or sorry, 24 with an overall decrease in criminal code filed by eight percent. Next slide, please. Break and enters are down 37%. That's trending throughout the last year since early winter of Latin fall and winter of last year. We're still down theft of motor vehicle down 36% and theft of theft under is up 12%. Next slide, please. This is just the general based on what you saw there. These are the numbers, the file numbers in relation to those statistics that you saw on the last screen. Next slide. Okay, so just as an overview, what we're seeing trending upwards is on the sexual assault side of things. And just for perspective, criminal code, persons crimes are up 35%. That is trending across other municipalities. Originally, it was down earlier in the year. It's now trending back upwards. Municipally, across Central Alberta District, it's up 3%, we're a little higher. That we are trending in property crime down, we're at the same, down 7%. Central Alberta area is down 18% and our other criminal code is down 24%. So we're actually ahead there. On the break and enter side of things, Central Alberta District is at 10% down. We're at 37, so we're in a better position. 21% on theft of motor vehicle and theft under there to actually down 8%. We're up 12, and I'll get to those specifics in a second. So in looking at criminal code and it trending upwards slightly, we have an increase in sexual assaults. I've done a complete review of those sexual assault files. We're up 54% specifically in sexual assaults. Although down from earlier in 2017 and 18, we're trending upwards. I've had a look at these files and a few of them are historical sexual assaults. So they're they're not something that's occurring now. Something happened several years ago. Couple of these files of the other three were involving a child under 12. And then there's a couple of different files with regards to a domestic partner situation. Other things that are trending upwards are criminal harassment and uttering threats. I did another review of these statistics and we've had 150 files in relation to these types of occurrences. With 27 being in August, the usual monthly average is around 19, so we're up a little bit. But then I had one of our members do a complete scrub on these types of files, just to kind of get our heads around where we're going. 10 of the 27 were flagged as domestic violence files. 13 of those were cleared by a charge. And then the vast majority of the rest are all related to verbal altercations over the internet and things like that where it's somebody's uttering threats to somebody or harassing somebody over the internet. So and really, the vast majority of than the ones that we lay charges on were rather frivolous investigations of anything, had no substance to them. So although it's showing it's trending upwards, the remainder of those files, about half were this type of file. And on the other side of things, just on querying on domestic files, we are trending upwards probably 9% this year. However, we are down 13% for the month of August. So it's now coming back down. Property crime. So I had a quick look at property crime. With regards to break and enters, we're trending downward 37%. We're down 51% in August. Where we did see an increase was the theft under specifically with 37% increase in month of August. A number particular note on those, that was 44% increase in shoplifting and and 53% increase in theft of bicycle. So we have seen, and we've talked about this, I think, on our last quarterly, we're seeing this involving bike crime, theft of bicycle. So one of the things we're gonna have to look at and look at Trent again is to find out the status of our bike registry. Although we moved that forward last year, I didn't really take, and I think we need to kind of circle back around to that and again, to see if we can get that registry going again. And that will hopefully have a a an effect where if we do locate someone in possession of bicycle, we'll be able to prove or disprove whether it's stolen or not stolen. So that's going to be a work in progress to take away from me on the on the theft of bicycle side of things. But that's what's driving the theft under. Breaking enters are still in good shape, 37% down for the year and 51 down for the month of August. So we're still seeing that still staying down. It's not coming back up. And again, we've talked about breaking enters being one of the main drivers on the CSI. Next slide, please. Okay, just going through the annual performance plan and just a reminder on our drug enforcement, I have a down a few slides. I have a kind of a APP tracking document where we're at as far as meeting our goals on that. Drug enforcement, Jackson just put a press release out this morning in relation to a significant drug seizure that happened last Friday, a search warrant. This stemmed from a couple of overdoses that we had earlier in the week, last week, Monday, Tuesday. I think we had three that we responded to, and I think the fire department and EMS responded to, I think, five based on the overdose on Monday, one of which resulted in a death. Based on those investigations, our crime reduction team pushed a little hard on some of the occupants of the residents and also the associates around the person that passed away. And as a result of that, they obtained enough information to sue search warrant in the city with us one on Friday. 71 grams of meth, eight of fentanyl. Sure, I got the numbers right. I believe it's 71 grams of meth and eight grams of fentanyl were seized. Four people are charged with multiple trafficking and illegal offenses. One is a resident of the task when one's a resident of Edmonton and the other two are residents of West Macheese. Four people that were in fact charged. This is the second search warrant done in the last three weeks. Three weeks ago, they did another search warrant in the community here on the just just south of the city hall. We're actually one street over, which resulted in several grams of methamphetamine being seized. There's also stolen vehicle involved there as well as a couple firearms that were also taken out of that residence. Last Friday, crime reduction team did a a search warrant on a rural property, so east of the city resulted in five stolen vehicles being located. It was a chop shop situation, a light plant, several motorcycles, five stolen vehicles, two of which were from the city of the task one. One was from Red Deer, the one was from Camrose, and I I don't know where the the other vehicles were from, but that was a pretty significant event. So the crime reduction team has done a search warrant a week for the last three weeks with some significant effects on crime in the task one. So that's on drug enforcement. Again, I'm just going to go through this gang enforcement, membership identification piece. That one's still in the works with Corporal Zayalkowski. Bear spray bylaw, that's under persons crimes, talking with Trent Jaeger on this Sergeant Jaeger and I discussed this file as far as putting this by law together. One of the pieces that's kind of hold that held us up on this one was Minister Madu put a comment out in the media here that he thought that it would be good for the person to be able to care carry bear spray as a personal defense piece. When that letter went out and that comment went out, I kind of we kind of pumped the brakes on the bylaw at this particular time. We don't want necessarily to go against Soul Gen. So with that being said, there's a letter been sent to Ottawa looking for some guidance with regards to that. And I think the last I heard with Mr. Madu is he's reaching out to Ottawa to see whether or not, in fact, he can, in fact, do that or not do that. So we're just waiting on that one to to circle back to us to determine whether, in fact, it's, we can put that forward. If all of a sudden now there's a provincial ruling that says you can possess bear spray, then it might be a moot point. Our education program with first of weapons and guns, that's stalled due to COVID at this point in time, having any issues trying to get face to face with people. Pawn shop bylaw, next slide, please. Pawn shop bylaw, we was passed at council here several weeks ago. Again, I'm working with Sergeant Jaeger on the next case of this is to then start rolling it out to the local pawn shops. We have to do some education with them. They have to get their infrastructure in place and their computer updating and being then hooked up to B W I. We've been in contact B W I to put some training. We have want to put at least two people on each watch, take part in some training on how to use the database. Then also, there's also a training component for the pawn shop owners who are going to be running the programs and putting the data into the program. So we have some implementation of some computer infrastructure as well as some training pieces that need to move forward. We're looking for perhaps the first of January versus the year to kind of start kick off that that program. Our fraud presentations with the new cadets that we have, this has been assigned to three of the new cadets again, so a bit little bit stalled due to COVID. However, what we're trying to do is we're getting some multimedia and also some social media inputs that we can put out on Facebook. And they're researching that with K Division headquarters to get those those out of the jar type things that you get out on our Facebook place. That's a quick rundown. Want to go to the next slide? Just to run down on the Q Q reports here, Q one search warrants, we're looking to do 12. We've done eight. Intel meetings are right online. Trafficking investigations were a little bit behind, but like I said, in the last couple of weeks, the crime reduction team has really picked up the speed on trafficking investigations. Curfew checks, still a work in progress. We had a NCO meeting here a couple of weeks ago and I had to pardon the expression, get the whip out a little bit on the NCOs to start pushing those forward a little more. Part of the drawback on the curfew checks, although they have some significant effect, we're not getting a ton of support from the Crown Prosecutor's Office. We'll breach these guys five, six, seven times, and then they'll go to court, they'll withdraw a bunch and only get a plea to one, and then they'll get time of custody or something. So that's a circle back around to the Crown Prosecutor's Office just to see where we can go as far as getting a little more support on those high end prolific offenders. Hotspot checks, that's a new one that's just come out as part of our data to action program that I think you guys are familiar with. And that again is our members doing numerous checks on hotspots where we find crime happening and also the crime mapping piece. Social media, our new Facebook program, Facebook program just went online here a couple of months ago. And we're actually getting a fair bit out on social media now with regards to our Facebook program. And downtown patrol. So been tracking those since the hub was down in the downtown core. And we've moved that reporting over to the 10th 10th location down by Walmart. And we've completed 171 of our 250 targeted for the year so far, 70 in the first quarter and 101 this last quarter. On the 10th city movement and also some tracking. We've only received, actually, we actually created an address for in our data system to try and capture. We've only had seven calls for service, but I know that's not the accurate number that we've received there. Of those specifically that were actually logged in to our database are seven calls, two assaults, one robbery of personal items and several breaches of port orders and one disturbance. That's not reflective of actually what's happening in the area. We've had an increase of that calls for service in the area. And a specific note, just last week, we had as many as 31 calls for service over a 10 day period. And again, it's a variety of things, stepped under, break and enter suspicious person for those liquor offenses disturb the peace nine, one robbery, and then five mischiefs, one trespass and one uttering threat. So we just all of a sudden seen a spike of calls for service right in the in the south end there. Prior to last week, it was just the normal trend that we normally see on the south end. So I'm gonna have another look at these files. I did a quick review of them this morning. And again, we have to go back around to that prolific offender matter. There's three or four names that keep popping up as being the subject of the complaint. And I want to take that back to our prosecutor to say, okay, we need to do some formal enforcement, not just move them along, take them back to the 10th city. Actually, look at getting a statement from someone that lays some criminal code charges against us. So that's just as of last week, all of a sudden, we've seen just a real high up to, I think. I think part of that would be also be just some of the business owners at the end, they're just getting a lot of pressure. And then now they're starting to pick up phone on a regular basis. So that's where we're at on that. And that concludes my report. Questions?
Thank you. First off, how long have you been in the community?
How long have I been in the task?
Yeah, about three weeks. I'd be curious as to what your experience has been since you've since you've arrived.
Um, I've been welcomed with open arms attachment. I'm slowly getting around to to meeting everybody. First opportunity to come here, so. Um, as far as I'm concerned, policing is policing. I came in Red Deer, which is which is big and busy as well. So um, issues in the task are not a lot different than you're going to find in other places. I've been welcomed with open arms. So as far as I'm concerned, it's been very, very normal for me. And so I'm just kind of getting into, you know, friends here, what's driving it. Well, the knowledge has been in the community a long time, so unfortunate to be able to to sit down. I've been working, but overall impressions, I'm happy to be here. I look forward to to working in the community. I like busy. I like a challenge. So, you know, this is this is a good place to be.
Well, welcome. And we look forward to more meetings like this. So I open the floor for questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead. Thank you. Through the chair, Keith, you had talked about bear spray and the inability to possibly have a bylaw for that. Is bear spray an issue to residents or is it to your members or both? What's behind the idea of?
Yeah, it was a little while ago. We talked about this, I think, in council, and I'll just give you a little bit of an update. What we see is ability for someone to get a firearm or another or another weapon, so to speak, and use that as a as a weapon of choice, so to speak. There's there's sentencing minimums on the use of firearm, commission of offense, things like that. But if you were to use bear spray, it's it's the lesser of the of the two, if I could put it that way. So what we find is especially in the criminal element and also also in some of the homeless people in town who will use bear spray as a defense piece, or we will see folks in town maybe up to no good, and when we do a search, say, for liquor, or we do a search for whatever reason, what we're finding is is we'll see a big can of bear spray. And I'm not talking about the small personal size one that used to keep a dog away from you or something like that. I'm talking about the party bag, the big, the big jug with the handle on it that they use to it actually used to keep bears at bay. Well, what we found when in doing a lot of our armed robberies investigations and also a lot of our assault weapons is bear spray was using as a weapon of choice. And to be in possession of bear spray itself is not illegal. But if you pick it up and you use it as a weapon, well, now it's an assault with a weapon, right? So you can use anything as a weapon, this microphone, that camera stand, you know, it doesn't matter, whatever. As soon as you pick something up and use it as a weapon, it's now a weapon. Bear spray is exactly the same. As soon as you pick up the bear spray and you use it on someone as a weapon, it's assault with a weapon. Now it's illegal, but before they have it, it's not illegal to possess, right? So what we're moving towards is because of the prevalence of bear spray being used and it not being used for the intended purpose of it is to move towards a bylaw to outlaw the possession of bylaw, excuse me, bear spray in the city of Tascun, just to alleviate that opportunity. So if a police officer or a bylaw officer comes across it and they're not using it for its intended purpose, or it's not in possession of them for their intended purpose, then it would be an offense under the bylaw, and we would have a pretty good fine to go along with that. And not only that, but we're able to seize it as well and take it out of circulation, so to speak. Did I answer your question?
Did. Thank you. Yes, you talked about the increase of activity around the Walmart area.
Yep, more foot patrols, more. We it's been a steady. We've been there four, five, six times a shift, sometimes as many as seven or eight times a shift, depending on the ability. We are in the area on a regular basis. And what we what I saw in my review of the thirty files that came in last week was a lot of cooperation with other agencies coming and picking folks up, taking them to the tent, or the members driving them back to their tent city, or giving them a ride, courtesy ride to somewhere else in town. I think we need to kind of start turning up the heat on some some actual enforcement. And I mean enforcement, us coming and doing something, taking them somewhere or deterring at or moving them along as a piece of enforcement. But I'm looking towards, I think it's time we start laying some more charges and and have that also as a deterrent into that heat. But again, I I I'd be leery to say what's causing this all of a sudden this big ramp up. I think maybe the nice weather. We haven't had the fall that, you know, all of a sudden now we're back in the summertime and twenty, high twenties, that sort of stuff. So we're seeing a little bit. Also, end of the month, little extra money around at the end of the month as well. So we'll be coming into our busy next three, four, five days will be significantly busier because of the end of the month pay that usually comes into that social group.
And when you were doing foot patrols downtown, you were doing some visits to some of the local businesses. Is that happening in that area as well?
It is. Yeah. I personally, I've actually been around to a lot of the businesses on the south end of town to get their temp check is what what's happened. We're encouraging them to pick up the phone call, and I think that's also part of why we're seeing that uptick is we just say, listen, if you don't call, you know, we don't know that's happening, so please call us.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, I've got a couple of questions here. Karen, could you go back to the slide, crime statistics, actual, it's about the third or fourth one? Yes. So Keith, we've we've had many conversations about file load, case, caseloads for your staff and so on. And I need some help with the math. So so, for example, under total persons crime, I see a change from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one of almost two hundred files.
Yes.
Or situations, and the change being an increase of thirty five percent. But then I see on the far right, a decrease in file of minus twenty three. So if we've got cases going up, an increase of thirty five percent, how do we have files going down? Because you go, I think you go back to the to two thousand seventeen, it says six eighty one, six seventy three. We're still below that. So it's the average plus or minus per year. It's the average. So because two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we had more, and then we had we had a little bit less in two thousand nineteen. Now we're back up to our six hundred numbers again. So it's went back down and now it's come back up. I believe, I mean, this, these, I don't do these numbers, I don't do this, and this comes out of the analyst shop out of K Division. So I think that's what that number is, but I can confirm that and get back.
Yeah, please, because as as you recall, we've had many conversations about the caseload for each of your officers. And when I see a caseload where it shows average file is down a hundred, that sort of flies in the face of some of our conversations in terms of caseload.
So then the change from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty one is we're down four percent.
Right.
Right. Then the next thirty five percent is the increase between twenty and twenty one.
Correct.
And then the average plus or minus per year, I'm going to have to go back and exactly how they get that number. But I think it's because we were, it went down into four sixty four and four eighty seven, and now it's coming back up.
Okay.
Still.
No, I'd be interested in how the math works out.
Thank you. My next question, Karen, is on slide. Crime stats. Bonne sexual assaults and everything. There we go. Keith, you talked about the harassment files and the, no, I'm going to back up to sexual assault files. You indicated that the number of those files that you screened actually were from years ago. So why would they be in our stats now?
Because they were reported down. So you could have a, you could have a sexual assault that happened fifteen years ago, because it's reported now, that's when we.
Okay, that's why the stats count it. Okay, thank you. And in terms of the harassment and other threats, up fairly significantly. You indicate there's one hundred and fifty five files. Do you know off the top of your head, out of those one hundred and fifty five files, what percentage of charges would be laid against those?
I can only give you what I looked at as far as the just to get back to those numbers I had. About fifty percent, we're relating charges. We have twenty seven, I think, and then yeah. We had twenty seven reported, and then of those twenty seven, and we were usually averaging about nineteen, ten had a domestic violence relationship kind of flag put to them, which moves me towards it being domestic. And thirteen of those files of the twenty seven were charred, were by charge mostly domestic related type of offenses, so about fifty percent. And if you'll note, if you remember, I think we discussed this before, where there's a domestic related offense that has been committed in most cases, and we are obligated to lay charges where there's where there's evidence to support a charge, whether the complaint wants to go forward with it or not. So it kind of fall, once it falls into that domestic violence lane, you're going to see a higher proportion of charges laid in those specific cases. But if this criminal harassment and other threats is involved, two guys at a bar, or, you know, two guys at work or whatever, and they're not related in a relationship in any way, shape, or form, there's a lot of discretion used in those particular cases. And
and maybe you can't answer this question. I I'm curious as to whether the potential or the increase of services at the hospital with regard to domestic violence.
Yes.
Because Gabby and I worked on a project for most of last year.
Right.
And are you seeing more reports coming out of the hospital, people disclosing?
Whoa, that's a new one. I'll have to, I'd have to go back and check those numbers to see if they're actually coming from there. I don't think so, sir.
Okay.
But I I I.
Okay, no.
I'd really be guessing on whether it's actually coming directly from the hospital or not.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, Keith, is in relation to the curfew checks, and you've indicated you haven't had a lot of support from the courts.
I can maybe temper that with a little bit. It's a little frustration on the part of the members. It's going, we're going to go do these checks. We're going to breach the guy, and we do do, say we breach one person, we breach him six or seven times. It goes to the courts, the courts withdraw almost all of them, and he pleads guilty to two. He gets thirty days in jail. He's been in custody for twenty days. It's time served, and he's out the door again.
But you and your staff picked the number, the target number of six hundred.
We we picked six hundred. I actually put it on my NCOs there at the meeting, and I said, you tell me how many you think you're going to do. And I they said, well, no problem. We did. I think we did five hundred last year.
Yeah, no, I guess I guess my point being is that you selected number and your staff did because you obviously felt that was an important action.
Absolutely. Still is.
So we would see considerable change in these numbers, hopefully in the next quarter.
I'm hoping.
Thank you very much. And on that note, thank you so very much for your report and and thanks for all the work that you and your staff do.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
And we're going to move on to item number four, A, the customer service report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Nielsen. Welcome, counsel. Today's report is intended to inform city council of the results of the two thousand twenty one customer service survey. The two thousand twenty one customer service survey was hosted on the What If We Tasked In portal from August sixth until August thirty first of this year. The city of Tascun's first customer service survey was conducted in two thousand twenty, providing administration with a snapshot of the city of Tascun state of customer service. The two thousand twenty report allowed for the development of internal goals, objectives, and strategies to better align city practices and processes with the community's customer service expectations, and also provided the city with a benchmark to compare future customer service survey results against. Attached is a report on the two thousand twenty one customer service survey results as well as a comparison of this data to that of the two thousand twenty customer service survey. Excuse me. The comparison of data and feedback from both the two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one customer service survey has resulted in the following conclusions. The city's website remains poorly rated for navigability two years in a row, with half of respondents indicating they had a difficult time finding information on the site. A business case for an updated user intuitive website will be presented to council as part of future budget deliberations to help address this dissatisfaction. Additionally, I've emailed our leadership team to set up additional website training opportunities for interested city employees. Consistency is required for how city employees interact with customers. It's especially important to ensure positive contact with all customers. Given that fifty nine percent of survey respondents in two thousand twenty one stated they contacted the city between one and three times, meaning we have a limited window of opportunity to facilitate a positive experience. Note, the customer service manual provides a structure for this consistency, and it is up to each department slash division manager to ensure their employees adhere to the outlined customer service structure and overall customer service expectations. This is being addressed as part of the annual review of the customer service survey results as well as having the city's customer service manual function as a living document. Ongoing customer service training for city employees is recommended to ensure a unified and consistent understanding of how to provide excellent customer service. The city is providing employees with customer service training through our partnership with Norquest, rolling out November with the goal of having all employees through the course by the end of two thousand twenty two. As well as online accessibility of service is a common request for those who participated in this year's customer service survey, and senior leadership continues to pursue the virtual city hall option, which will significantly address those requests. Additionally, communications continues to research public service benchmarking initiatives to assist the organization in better better understanding and measuring customer service delivery, including the city of Lethbridge municipal benchmarking initiative as well as a customer satisfaction study from the Office of Public Services Reform. That concludes my report. You've got the results of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one customer service survey report in comparison as part of your agenda. I will open the floor for questions. Sorry, I am here for your questions. Deputy Mayor Nielsen will open the floor.
So I'd open the floor for any questions at this time? Sorry. Yes.
Well, I do think COVID plays a role in the in-person contacts. Certainly, it's also important to note that so seventy six people participate in this year's survey, and it's not a statistically relevant survey.
All the questions, then I've entertained a motion. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, can you repeat the very last sentence?
Is there any plan in place to revamp the website or to possibly make it more friendly?
Yeah, so our current website provider, Civic Plus, they build their websites to try and serve every single function possible that a municipal website would want or need, which basically means that there's very little wiggle room in terms of the structure of the website. I mean, it it isn't as responsive as many other municipal websites, and I've definitely pulled my colleagues in other municipalities about this. So the actual structure and content management system of the website is a challenge. It's not something that we can't work with at this juncture, which is part of the overall training, rolling out to city staff so that they can ensure their content is at least updated more regularly, right? Because then it doesn't fall to two or three people. So does that answer your question? Honestly, no. I would like to make a lot of changes to it, but I'm limited to the content management system with the current website that we're working within, which is part. with the current website that we're working within, which is part of the business case approach that will be coming. Um, to better explain like why we're limited, how this will better serve and hopefully, uh, address those concerns that residents have. Uh, but I will make my best effort to make sure that those are addressed with the current system that we have.
I entertain a motion. No, sorry, we don't accept those informations. Okay. Thank you very much, Rand.
Thank you.
Topic, uh, four B, project updates.
Good afternoon, committee. Um, I'm here today to provide an update on two projects that were due back before council by the end of Q three, two thousand twenty one, that is today's date. So there are two, um, projects specifically. Uh, one is the archives assessment. The others is the current state of homelessness report and I just want to provide an update as to the progress we've made and when council might anticipate to see the, or the committee might anticipate to see these projects come back to council. So as you folks know, last November ninth with the archives, with Tascwen, made a, city council made a motion to temporarily close the archives for up to one year and exam, examine the current portfolio and assets of the archives. And we were to bring a report back by Q two, two thousand twenty one. During that time, um, administration engaged the Archives Society of Alberta and put us into contact with, um, an expert archivist, um, from the west coast who was able to help us scope a project out. And just as we were, um, getting ready to start that project, that individual had said they were unable to do it. And I came back to council and asked for, um, an extension until, um, I think it was the end of, sorry, where is that? Um, the end of September, the, the today's date. And so when we met on April twenty sixth to ask for that extension, um, the committee provided the following feedback, moving forward on that project. One was that you had hoped, uh, members had hoped that, uh, the archives would continue to operate efficiently. That review would prove that it, it was operating efficiently or identify recommendations to ensure that it does, uh, operate efficiently. To get a better understanding of how other municipalities are using their archives, recommendations on best type of archives of the community, how it should be governed and a clear roadmap on how best to move forward and recommendations on how we can better manage the archives. Administration then pursue or, um, proceeded to engage a management consultant um, and was able to, um, hire M and P. Uh, M and P was able to then subcontract to Heritage Professionals, which is an archivist, um, firm out of Toronto, um, Canada. So the project officially started in June with community engagement and analysis occurring between July and August. Um, and administration has received a draft final report from M and P. But we are currently working with the consultant to finalize their analysis and sure, and ensure that we understand the impact of these recommendations before we bring something back to council. We are anticipating that the, uh, council will receive the final report and presentation at the November eighth, two thousand twenty one council meeting. So that is my first project update. The second one is around the current state of homelessness report. Uh, this initially was, um, identified as a requirement, um, in two thousand twenty. Um, and it essentially isn't a project to, um, help our community gain a better understanding of the current state of homelessness in Wataquen. So, um, in regards to this project specifically, we have been engaged in the following discussions. Administration has been involved in discussions with community groups through the guiding coalition of homelessness to discuss data that is being collected by the community regarding the vulnerable population. And outside of, um, an Arden homelessness count that was done in two thousand eighteen, our community has very little data in regards to the vulnerable population. With the exception of data collected by the open door, there is very, very little information. And the open door has committed to making this data available at the end of September for analysis and discussion. If council recalls or committee calls, recalls back to the MOU signed with the open door, they're contractually obligated to provide us with this information. Second piece is that administration was, um, was invited by the RCMP to participate in a pilot project called Data to Action. This is a major component of the Alberta RCMP's crime reduction strategy and essentially is, um, identifying agencies and, and not-for-profits in the community to collect a large amount of data either on the vulnerable population or other audiences in, in the community. And to provide that information to the RCMP's crime analysts to ensure that A, the, the data is valid um, and it has been cleaned and can be analyzed and then B, to analyze the data and then to identify to, um, uh, our administration, um, different strategies we might be able to take to, uh, based off of what the data is telling them. So that first meeting happened, um, over the summertime. Um, uh, few different agencies in town with task when FCS S opened door, uh, Boys and Girls Club. They were invited to participate as well. And I believe the second meeting is happening in, um, October or November. I will report back as that, as that progresses. And the third piece is that, um, during a meeting, our, our last meeting of the regional safety and wellbeing committee, we brought the idea of doing another homelessness count in the region. As I, as I mentioned, the last one, uh, completed by Arden in two thousand eighteen, um, provides the last snapshot that this community had on a vulnerable population. But, um, two thousand eighteen, as you folks know, homelessness is, is fluid and two thousand eighteen was a long time ago. So the idea is to bring this back for discussion at future regional meetings and see if there is a appetite to do a regional homeless count. If there is not an appetite there, uh, we would at least perhaps, uh, look at doing a, um, municipal one, just the city one. So, uh, this work here on better understanding our current state of homelessness, um, it, it's difficult in that we don't have an agency that is working with the vulnerable population regularly that, that we are able to, to work with right now. And so the only other means of trying to get a better sense of, of, uh, our vulnerable population and what the currency of homelessness in Wataquen is, is through the, um, efforts I've kind of described already in the presentation. So administration will provide another major update on this work by the end of Q four as we, as it's, uh, are constantly looking, uh, reviewing this type of information and I should have another update. By that point in time, we would have had another RCMP meeting on the data and action piece. And we should have received the, uh, data from the open door. So I appreciate your time today and I will, uh, take any questions the committee might have on those project updates.
Thank you very much for the report. I'm gonna break this into two parts and let's talk first about archives. Are there any questions about the report on archives? I just have one that, um, they tie together. No, I guess they don't. Um, the first question I guess I have is, was there any discussion with the consultant about? If we had to relocate, this talks about managing the existing organization, that department, whatever you wanna call. Was there any conversation related to if we had to relocate out of that, what steps would be or anything of that nature, Paul?
Yeah, a good question, um, to the chair. The consultant is very well aware of facility that the archives vault is currently within. They're actually doing another review for us on the facilities. They're doing a broader review of facility assessments. And so they're getting a better sense on the future of that facility. Um, and then what, and the recommendations, um, um, we, that, that would be a factor that we would be looking at. And then recommendations, the next steps on if we were to choose that recommendation, what would be the impacts on that? And so right now, administration has received a final report back from M and P with, uh, four different recommendations. Um, and, and really, um, when we bring that report back in November, there'll be, um, you know, presentation to council and then, and then, um, you know, uh, probably our administration will probably have to go away and, and do more of an impact analysis to actually bring you information, help you make a decision on that. But the location of the archives, um, and, and, and of the vault specifically, um, and the future of the civic building and, and how they're intertwined is absolutely part of the recommendation. Um, and so they're, they've, they're well, well aware of that and have done the analysis. It's just needing to get a better sense of what direction council wants to go and, and then, and then what would the impacts of that recommendation be if we go down that route?
And do you believe there's gonna be an adequate timeline to roll us into the next budget deliberations?
Yes, to the chair, absolutely. Uh, the, the analysis is, is, is done. There's, um, really the, the piece that's delaying. It is that impact analysis from administration's perspective. So when that report is final, we should be able to bring something back to council. Once I've done the, M and P has done their presentation to say, look, here's the four different recommendations and here's how the impact administration and here's the potential costs involved.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions on the report on homeless? Gabby?
Thank you. Um, I just have a question regarding the regional safety and wellbeing committee. When you brought up the fact that, um, there could be a regional, um, report on the state of homelessness in the region. Uh, what does the region cover? Would that be just the Wataquen area? The rural municipalities are everywhere?
Yeah, great question. So through the chair to councillor Watts, um, right now, the, the regional committee is made up of the four first, uh, four pre-nations of Masco Chiefs, as well as Wataquen County and the city. Uh, we're currently reviewing it. We're trying to develop a terms of reference that works for everybody. And then we'll get a better sense when that terms of reference is finalized, um, official, um, uh, endorsement from each of those municipalities if they, if they wish to continue as part of the committee. I- i- in a perfect world, all of the municipalities I've, I've talked about will be a part of that moving forward. It might be though that it's just the city or it's just the city and one or two of them. In which case, that's what I, when we talk regional, it would be the participating members of the committee.
Thank you.
Paul, in relation to the report that just came back from the RCMP with regard to potential criminality tied to the encampment. What role does the, the committee play in, in, uh, working with the RCMP in that regard?
Yes, to the chair, uh, the RCMP is, is an active participant on that committee. And so it would be, um, I think moving forward, when we, with the terms of reference has been created and we understand how that committee is going to work together. Um, it's the job of that governing board, it's essentially what it is, to, um, address emerging issues or, um, challenges that each of these communities are facing as a region. And then start to talk about how we, how we can, um, approach those things together, right? The RCMP is a big piece of this, the region, uh, sorry, the, um, Tascwen Regional Public Schools. Um, AHS is a big part of it as well. And so the idea is, um, in the example today, because it's so top of mind, is the Wataquen homeless encampment. You know, in the future to have more of a proactive conversation on those types of things and trying to get regional, um, collaboration and, 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 and an approach onto how we address these issues. Um, in regards to policing, RCMP is a big piece of that, but it's only, it's only one part of that, right? So the idea behind these, this, this governing board is to, um, promote collaboration, be a lot more strategic and proactive and then to also remove barriers for those agencies or, or groups below us. They're actually doing the work in the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report and the work you're doing on both of these, uh, projects. So it's appreciated. Item five, oh, I thought you raised your, item five A is a closed session. All in favor? Karen?